City Council is back in session. Roll call, please, sir.
Ding Felder.
Here.
Gooch. Maniscalco.
Here.
Citro.
Here.
Miranda. Carlson.
Here.
And Vera.
Here. We are on negative two. Let's come to... we're on number eight. Staff, please.
Mary Semeniego, Plan and Design and Development Coordination. On number eight is REZ 1975. It's a rezoning request at 7702 South Mascot Street from Industrial General to Plan Development.
This is Danny Collins of your Planning Commission staff. I've been sworn in. Our next case brings us to the South Tampa Planning District and more specifically the Port Tampa City Neighborhood. The closest transit stop is located approximately 1,500 feet to the north near the intersection of South Kissimmee Street and West Idaho Street. Southwest Port Tampa Park is the closest public recreation facility, which is generally located 2,300 feet to the west of the subject site. Subject site is within a Level A evacuation zone. This is an area of the subject... or this is the area of the subject site. You'll see the subject site is here. It's outlined in purple. This is South Mascot. This is MacDale Air Force Base, and you'll see the majority of the land uses is single-family residential surrounding the subject site. This is the adopted future land use map. You'll see the subject site is here. The existing future land use is residential 10. It was previously changed to residential 10, I believe, last month. So this trend is moving towards the residential 10 in this area. This area in the blue is MacDale Air Force Base, and it's represented by the blue-colored public. And then there's some light gray, which represents... or which represents light industrial, and this brown color, which is heavy industrial. The applicant is requesting to rezone from Industrial General to Plan Development to allow the development of seven single-family detached residential units. West portion of South Mascot Street is currently under development with single-family detached residential development. Parcels located to the north and west of the subject site are developed with single-family detached. Some are informed in lot size to what is proposed in the Plan Development. The proposed PD is consistent with the development pattern and density anticipated under the residential 10 future land use category. Based on those considerations, the Planning Commission staff finds the request consistent with the Tampa Confiscation Plan.
Thank you, sir. Questions? Councilman Ding Felder.
Planning Commission, you guys look at high-hazard zones in terms of flooding and that sort of thing. Isn't this area pretty low?
Yeah, we look at that stuff through our rezoning analysis and through the plan amendment review.
So is that part of your report?
We talk about... you know, we touch upon evacuation zones. As far as wetlands and drainage, that's not in our purview.
David, did you want to jump in?
Again, David Haye, Planning Commission staff. It is within the coastal hazard area. It's typically looked at permitting through the city, and they would have to pay... first, they need to ensure that buildings are constructed correctly to the code related to the building code and things like that. And then any mitigation fees would be handled by the city.
How about evacuation?
Evacuation is handled through the rezoning and the transportation review.
Mary Semeniego, Plan and Design and Development Coordination. Again, this property is at 7702 South Mascot Street. Here is the site plan. Again, the property is currently zoned Industrial General. You cannot have single-family residential development in Industrial General zoning district. So the property would have to be rezoned. The property currently... or the applicant is proposing to reestablish these seven historically platted lots as they stand. Here is the subject property in red. It's currently undeveloped. This property... this PD is a larger PD that was approved approximately two years ago for a massive redevelopment, or not redevelopment, development of large sections of undeveloped land in the Port Tampa area. Part of that PD approval, again, approved two years ago, that developer is required to extend and improve this section to Mascot Street and dedicate it to the city. Once that is completed, and there are notes to that effect on this site plan, then the applicant can develop their property with the seven reestablished historically platted lots. Each lot is at least 50 by 100. Each lot is 5,000 square feet in area. The proposed setbacks are 20 for the front, seven... I'm sorry, five on the sides, and 15 in the rear with a maximum height of 35 feet. There are trees currently on the property due to the elevation of the site, as well as the current floodplain regulations and the grading and filling that has happened in the surrounding area. This site will have to be filled with approximately two to three feet of fill to bring it up to grade with the rest of the surrounding properties, as well as the crown of the new improved Mascot Street. So to answer your question, Mr. Ding Felder, yes, this site will have to be filled at least two or three feet. Other than that, there are no waivers being requested with this application. There are some minor changes between first and second reading from Planning, Design, and Development Coordination. Natural Resources did find it consistent. They want to note regarding the specifications to the fill. The fill required for the site require the removal. There are a majority of the trees on-site. Tree removal under this condition is allowed per Section 27 284.2.4. Tree mitigation is still required on the site. At the time of permitting, accommodation of payments into the due trust fund and planting trees on-site will be required. And stormwater had a note that they wanted to add regarding the proposed pond and stormwater drainage system. Will have to go through a construction plan review, which is a PLN review. Other than that, there are no locally designated landmarks. There are no waivers. So the development review and compliance staff did find this consistent with the City of Tampa Land Development Code. In the venue approved this application, please include the modifications between first and second reading on your motion.
Thank you, ma'am.
Are there any questions for me?
Any questions? Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Applicant?
Steve Michelini. I'm the authorized agent for this project at 7702 South Mascot. As the staff has pointed out, we... our project is sandwiched in between... in between other single-family residential projects that have already been developed. If you look at the aerial... let me see. This is the last remaining parcel, and this entire parcel over here has already been developed by Lenar Homes. And this parcel is in the process of being redeveloped. The roadway that Mary was talking about is an extension of Mascot, which will go south. And then you have the north boundary line of the MacDale Air Force Base. This is really a project in response to MacDale's desire to provide more housing for its employees and for members of the armed forces. And that's really driving the demand. This area has undergone extensive redevelopment and infill development. This petition reestablishes the original plat through a PD. You could develop eight units by right, and we're proposing seven. The project basically follows the development pattern that's already surrounding it on all of its sides, except for the MacDale side. And this is, as I said, the last remaining parcel. Again, let me show you that aerial... The last remaining parcel that's not already zoned for a single-family residential. It's consistent with the city staff review, as well as the Planning Commission review, and we're respectfully requesting your approval. We do have to add fill to accommodate the stormwater issues and to address the FEMA height regulations regarding flood zones. So we'll address all of that at the permitting stage, and we'll be required to meet the stormwater requirements for the city at that time. We're not asking for any waivers, so we're respectfully requesting your approval.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Councilman Carlson.
Steve, we're getting... when it rains, my office gets flooded with calls from people who are complaining that as new houses come in, they get put higher, and then the water runs off to the other houses. So is there some way to mitigate that in advance so that we don't have the neighbors across the street complaining?
Yes, sir. What's already happened is that these homes here and these homes here are already elevated. So the remainder that would be getting the complaints is this parcel here, which is now lower than all of the other properties that surround it. And part of the mitigation plan for the whole area is there's a series of ditches that will take the stormwater out to the bay. And you can see part of that ditching is here, and part of it is up in here. But I don't think you're going to get any calls from these folks because they're at the bottoms right now. And the other ones... the other properties are all higher.
And one last thing. It's not clear from your map, but it's... there's this piece that's marked in orange. But then on the other map, there's also the leg that goes underneath that's right along the fence. You're not proposing building houses along the fence.
No, that's part of the buffer zone for the MacDale Air Force Base.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it. Anyone here to publicly comment on item number eight? If so, please come forward.
Move the floor for a second.
Motion to close by Councilman Miranda, second by Councilman Maniscalco. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I believe it's Councilman Miranda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chairman and I move foul number eight, foul number REZ 19-75. Orders be presented in the first reading consideration. Orders for zoning property, general vicinity of 7702 South Mascot Street in the city of Tampa, Florida, more particularly described in Section 1 from zoning district classification IG Industrial General to PD Plan Development Residential Single Family Detached, providing an effective debate. The petition is mathematically approved, provided competent substantial evidence that the development is conditionally shown on the plan. It meets the comprehensive plan and all the city codes. There are no waivers.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Miranda, second by Councilman Citro. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
The motion carried unanimously. Second reading and adoption will be on November 7th at 9:30 a.m.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Next, we move to item number nine.
Mary Semeniego, item number nine is REZ 1976. It's a rezoning request at 710... 712 West Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard from RO1 to PD for medical office and business professional office.
This is Danny Collins, Planning Commission staff. I've been sworn in. Next case is in the central Tampa Planning District. Site is generally located west of North Boulevard and east of North Myrtle Avenue on Martin Luther King Highway. The site is in proximity to transit with service to the Tampa International Airport in West Tampa. Site is in evacuation D zone. This is an area of the subject site. It's outlined in purple. This is Martin Luther King Boulevard. This is North Myrtle Avenue. This is the adopted future land use map. This is... the pink color is CMU 35, Commercial Mix Use 35. This tan color is residential 10. Martin Luther King Boulevard is a transit Ephesus corridor. The commission staff has reviewed the application, found the plan development comparable to the existing development pattern found along this portion of Martin Luther King Boulevard. The development has complied with comprehensive plan policies regarding development along mixed-use corridors. Pedestrian connections have been provided that connect building entrances to public right-of-way. And a door has also been provided oriented towards the public right-of-way further in policy relating to mixed-use corridors. Based on those considerations, the Planning Commission staff finds the request consistent with the Tampa Confiscation Plan.
Thank you, sir.
Mary Semeniego for the record. Again, this is a Plan Development request for a vacant property to be developed for medical office and business professional office. The property is currently vacant. Here is a shot of the subject property. This is a designated non-hazardous grand tree that is proposed for removal, which is one of your waivers. As you can see, this... the boundaries of the property are the silt fences in black. And you can see the span and the size of the tree. It goes from property line to property line. Here is commercial property to the east of the application site. Here is a doctor's office to the west. And across the street, a single-family residential property and a vacant property. Here is the applicant's proposal. Again, a one-story medical office, as well as allowable for business professional office use as well. The total size of the project, it's a 3,000-square-foot building for both uses. The total size of the project, it's a 3,000-square-foot building for both uses. The property is located three lots to the west of the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard and North Boulevard intersections. The property is surrounded, as I showed you, by retail and office uses. The PD setbacks are 10 feet from the north, 20 feet, 5 feet from the south, 5 feet from the west, and 5 feet from the east. The maximum height is proposed at 35 feet. The required number of parking spaces for medical offices is 18. They are requesting waiver to go down to 16 parking spaces. That is 11 percent parking waiver reduction. There are changes to the waiver table between first and second reading. Transportation did find this application inconsistent because of the 11 percent parking wood reduction from 18 spaces down to 16. Natural Resources found this consistent. There are some changes between first and second reading that need to be done to the site plan. As far as waivers, there are five waivers being requested. The first is to 27-283.7, to reduce the required parking from 18 spaces to 16 spaces, which is a 11 percent reduction. Section 27-284, to reduce the required use buffer along the south property line from a 5-foot landscape buffer or a 6-foot CMU wall to a 6-foot PVC fence, subject to the district in lieu payment at time of permitting. The third waiver is 27-284.3.3, to reduce the required vehicle use area buffer along the south property line from 8 feet to 0 feet, subject to the in lieu district payment. Another waiver is 27-284.4, to contribute to the tree trust fund for mitigation trees, as well as required trees. And the last waiver request is 27-284.2.5, to reduce the, I'm sorry, to remove a non-hazardous grand tree for proposed construction activity, saying that overall, the development review compliance staff did find this inconsistent due to the parking waiver request. If in the event city council does choose to approve this, please keep in mind the waiver request, I'm sorry, keep in mind the modifications between first and second reading in your motion.
Councilwoman Carlson.
Thank you. Two things, Mary, would you put that picture of that tree back up again, please? Okay, non-hazardous tree. And next, can you put up the site plan and show us where the tree sits on the site plan?
It's right there, next to the handicap.
It's right here, sir.
Right next to the handicap thing?
Yes, sir.
So, and can you, and I assume the arborist hasn't run down here to join us tonight?
No, sir.
Okay. So it's a one-story building?
Yes, sir.
Do you know how high those branches were as they approached that building?
No, sir, I do not. I don't know that they...
Right, they looked pretty high to me.
Actually, they, I would, it's my professional opinion, those look relatively low. You can see in the building next to its door, that's a one-story building next door, and these branches are dipping pretty far down, and I was out on a site visit earlier this week.
Right, but by the time they get across that, it's a good distance of at least, what, 15, 15 feet, 20 feet before they get to the building, and so you've got a rise, you better put the, put the picture back there. You've got a rise, a rise in that one limb. Doesn't seem to have lower limbs, and we don't have anybody here to talk to us about the ability to save that tree. Part of my concern, counsel, is we're going to be losing a tremendous amount of trees because of what the state did with preemption, and now on top of that, you know, I think it's, it's our duty to try and save the trees that we can. I'm not saying we shouldn't approve this project. I'm not saying we shouldn't allow them to build a, build a building, but maybe we can save the tree and let them have the building too. But without an arborist here, how do we know? We're back in that same exact situation we were earlier in the evening. And I'm not faulting you, Mary, for that, but, but I'm faulting the process in regard to why we don't have the arborist here to ask these questions. So...
If I may, sir, just so you know, it is staff's position, as well as specifically the natural resources staff, to work very hard to try to bring every site into compliance and to try to save, frankly, every tree, and they look at every tree, and it's specifically limb pruning, if limbs can be pruned in order to save the tree and make buildings fit.
I appreciate that, but we don't have that testimony here in front of us, and we don't have the ability to ask those questions, and I'm not going to, you know, ask you those, because that's not your, that's not your deal. So anyway, with all due respect, you know, again, I'm, I'm really uncomfortable with this one, just for that reason. I'm sure everything else is fantastic.
Thank you, Councilman Carlson. Okay, applicant?
Good evening, counsel. Clayton Bricklmeyer, 601 Ashley Drive. The, I'm going to skip what we're doing. We're building an office building, so I'll just move to the waivers. Specifically, Mary, you took the pictures. Come on. That tree, property line to property line, and it sits there, as was pointed out. There is no reasonable reconfiguration. It's sitting in the middle. If you, if you all would want to waive all parking effectively and let us through the building in the front, then that would be a way to save that tree. I love trees, too. I got a giant one in my yard that I take really good care of. There's just not, it's not going to work this time. We already have the waivers. The, the other waivers, the use buffer and the vehicle use are effectively the same thing, because it comes down to this point. There is a 10-foot alley behind us, and then a backyard fence from the rear yard neighbor, so, I mean, they get, they get all that extra buffering. I don't think that's an issue. We hadn't heard from any of them, so I'm hoping that's a non-issue. And then the parking reduction is slight, and, I mean, candidly, we, we have a version of this drawn up where we eliminate this, this tree island, but that would be a place where we'd be putting a tree, in addition to hopefully, we can, we can fit a couple more trees on here, and the, and we're already probably going to have to pay into the trust fund, just because this site is so small, and that is, that is where we are. I would point out, I brought this, because I'm just going to start saying it, I understand there, there may be a difference of opinion, but... Where's the zoom? This is our medical office parking ratio compared to, I don't know, however many cities I grabbed that are kind of benchmark cities. Five to one is sort of the standard. We're running six to one. You can see Minneapolis actually has a max rate. We meet on this site, even with all these challenges, we meet a five to one. So I, I'm not going to go on, because I'm tired and hungry, but we think we meet all the criteria. I'm here for questions.
Any questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you very much, sir. Being none, we move to public comments. Is anyone here to publicly comment on item number nine? And so, please come forward at this time.
Second.
Motion to close by Councilman Naskalko, a second by Councilman Citro. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Councilman Carlson, do you...
Yes, I'm opposed.
Oh, I'm, of closing?
Yeah.
Do you, okay, I mean, do you wish to...
Well, again, I, I think we should continue this case. I think we should have the information we need. Mr. Bricklmeyer was...
Let's, let's open it before, because we...
I don't think we, I don't know if we voted.
We did. We have motion to open. Naskalko, Gudes, seconding. All in favor? Any opposed? Go ahead, sir.
Again, it's not the applicant's fault, but he didn't bring it, they didn't bring an arborist. We didn't bring an arborist. We have no idea what the height of those branches are as they, as they approach. We could waive a couple of additional parking spaces and perhaps save that tree, but I'm speculating, because I don't have the information. So it's the same situation that we were in earlier, except the only difference is there's no neighbors in opposition, because it's sitting on MLK. So that would be my motion, is to continue it, because I don't have the information adequate to be able to evaluate whether or not it meets the criteria for...
We didn't have a report, don't we? In the file.
A report on what?
Well, there, there, there's no objection by them.
We don't have the tree...
Can I ask you to come back?
We don't have the tree report. We don't have the tree people.
Yes, sir. Mary Saminiego.
Did the natural resources see this project?
Yes, sir.
Did they examine it?
Yes, sir.
Did they look at the tree?
Yes, sir.
Did they make a determination?
Yes, sir.
What was the determination?
That they found this project consistent.
Thank you.
Consistent what? What does that mean? Mr. Chair, if I ask, what does that mean, consistent?
If, if they thought, if, if they thought that this was being unnecessarily removed for a project, they would have found it inconsistent, that the tree could have been saved, or that changes to the building could have occurred, and that the tree could have been saved, they would have then found it inconsistent. They do that very often.
Right, but they're not here to answer our questions. We could talk about the, the circle around the tree, we could talk about the height of the branches. We don't have any of that information unless I'm not seeing it, and you can tell me where it is. It's not here.
I, I'm not arguing with you, sir.
Okay. So just because they've, quote, "found it consistent," they're operating under very tight constraints, okay? They, they've been given a site plan, the developer comes in and says, "Here's my box," okay, and it's really close to the tree, and they look at it and they go, "Yeah, it's really close to the tree, okay, we're, it's consistent." That's their evaluation.
I, I, I'm sorry, Mary Saminiego, I would have to argue that, that there's an extensive evaluation. There's quite a lengthy tree table and tree code now that are on the books. It's very complicated. Staff goes out at least twice and measures and evaluates every grand tree.
Right, and that's my point, is they're not here to discuss it with us, and this is a critical issue.
Let me, let me, I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to just say something. I, in my 26 years of public service, I've never gone to the audience to speak to anyone, petitioner or otherwise, when there was a hearing. I have witnessed now three times, someone's done that, not me. So I seen a hearing being held, I seen the people leave that were in opposition, and I see the developer leaving, and he calls them back and asks them, "Oh, we can work this out." "What?" And no one's ever said anything. "Well, the next time that happens, I'm leaving this city council." End of story. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Councilman Gudzjeda, stay concerned, for a question.
Well, I, I'm not a big tree guy. My area of town, we don't really, you know, deal with a lot of tree issues like other places, but I, I know that trees are important, but what I do see on a consistent basis, when there are issues about, for waivers or inconsistencies, other departments are here for that particular process. I seen Ms. Calloway in the back. She's been here, so I can see what Mr. Dingfelder's point is, that if there are tree issues, somebody from natural resources should be here to talk about an issue if it's brought up, or more information as relates to, to the tree or that property. So I do see his point as it relates to, if there's an inconsistency and a tree is the issue, somebody from that department should be here, especially if you have somebody else from another department here can speak on inconsistencies. So I, I, I think that's something we need to look at in the future, but I do see his point, and what he's saying, because, again, we don't know. I don't know a lot about trees. I see trees limbs hanging down, although I, I do kind of see his point.
Any, anyone else before we close? And sir, did you wish to make a motion at all before?
Yeah, that would be my motion, the same motion as we made earlier on that other case. It's exactly the same situation. We've got a big tree that potentially has impact, but we don't know, we don't have the information, we don't have the testimony, so I'd ask for a continuance, so we can have adequate information. Otherwise, there's no way you guys can evaluate, or I can evaluate, the waiver.
Okay, we have a motion to continue by Councilman Dingfelder, a second. Yes, sir.
Would you like to hear from the petitioner on this?
Good point.
And also, you've heard counsel's concerns. If you want to put anything on the record, now's the opportunity, and if you wish to have a particular date, that would also be helpful.
I would like to not continue this, because the problem is not limb height. Limb height will not affect the, the parking. The location of the tree is patently obvious to me, and countless, countless hours have been spent by the engineering team, and trust me, the tree people are not easy on us when we go through these pre-application, application processes. We get raked over the coals. This is the product of many, many hours of configuring this site in the best way possible, and what you are left with is a tree that touches the ground, limb height notwithstanding. The tree touches the ground, you've got to park it, and people have to back in and out and come and go. I would request no continuance, and I would request your approval. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. We have a motion to continue by Councilman Dingfelder, a second by...
On the continuance, yeah.
Yep, a second by Councilman Carlson. All in favor? Any opposed?
Aye.
May I ask for a roll call vote? Dingfelder, Gudes, Naskalko, Viera?
Aye.
Citro?
Aye.
Miranda? And Carlson. I'm sorry. Carlson. And the motion carried with Viera, Citro, and Miranda voting no.
Okay, and do we, and Councilman Dingfelder, sir, do we have a date for that?
I'd be glad to entertain, and it can be as soon as possible. I'm not trying to hold up the developer by any means.
Yes, sir.
We're just looking for a date that would work on your calendar, and like I said, I'm not trying to hold you up, and you very well might be right.
Yeah.
You're going to testify and say exactly what you said, and then you move on.
Mr. Ding, Mr. Bricklmeyer, there is a, a night meeting two weeks from tonight on the 24th, I believe is the date.
Yeah, Thursday the 24th.
That would be the...
How does your calendar look, sir?
It looks clear.
And we'll, we'll make you number two, sir.
Oh, thanks.
Make him number two. Okay, great.
October 24th, 2019, the second item at 6:00 p.m.
Okay. Yes, sir.
The second item? I don't...
Okay, we move next to item number 10. Staff here for number 10.
Mary Saminiego, item number 10 is REZ-1979. It's a resoning request at 711 South Dale Mayberry Highway from Plan Development to Plan Development for Bank with Drive-In Window Business Professional Office, Medical Office and Clinic.
This is Danny Collins, with the planning commission staff. I've been sworn. Next case is in the South Tampa Planning District. The site is at 711 South Dale Mayberry Highway. Transit is available in proximity to the subject site. Trans, or, South Dale Mayberry Highway is a traffic emphasis corridor and a mixed-use corridor. This is in a C evacuation zone. This is an area of the subject site. Subject site's outlined in purple. This is South Dale Mayberry Highway. You'll see commercial and office uses up and up along Dale Mayberry, and then you'll see residential uses towards the east and west of the subject site. This is the adopted future land use map. The site is currently designated Commercial Mix Use 35. That's shown in the color pink on the, on the future land use map. SMU 35 goes up down Henderson Boulevard, South Dale Mayberry Highway. As you move away from Dale Mayberry, you'll see Residential 20 in the green, and in the tan colors, Residential 10. The planning commission staff has reviewed the application, found the plan development comparable to the existing development pattern found along South Dale Mayberry Highway. The PD is very supportive of comprehensive plan policies relating to sidewalks, internal pedestrian connections, and design. Material sidewalks, crosswalks facilitate a safe pedestrian connection from South Dale Mayberry Highway to building entrances and the elevation, so it's a transparent and friendly pedestrian, pedestrian-friendly entrance. Based on those considerations, planning commission staff finds the request consistent with the Tampa comprehensive plan.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
Mary Saminiego, planning... Mary Samniego, planning, design, and development coordination. Again, this property, let me show you in the room. This property is located on Dale Mayberry, and it's bound by McKay to the south. There are retail uses and some townhomes to the north, a small business professional office directly to the west, and a school to the south. This property was originally developed as a planned development back in 2004. It was case Z 0464 to allow for a bank with a drive-in window. That project was developed, and that project is currently on site. The applicant is proposing with this current planned development, you have two options. And these are reflected in the site plans. So there's option one and option two. Option one is to keep the existing entitlements that were approved under Z 0464. So that would be option one, that they could retain those entitlements previously approved. Option two is a slightly reconfiguring, remodeling of the property. The parking garage will stay the same. The main building would remain the same. They would do a very small addition to the front and some minor remodeling additions, kind of interior between the parking garage and the building. Those increased square footage would be approximately 3,000 square feet of additional building. Also, the existing retention pond would be covered, and there would be a vault system in place for stormwater, and additional parking would be in place. But basically, the parking garage would stay the same. The majority of the building would stay the same. The bank drive-in window would be, drive-through lane would be removed in a small addition. And then option two would allow for business professional office uses, medical office uses, and clinic. For the newly proposed planned develop, option two, the setbacks are 10 from the front, 0 from the side, and 14 from the rear. The maximum building height is 40 feet. The existing option one required 88 parking spaces, and 161 were provided in the combination of the surface parking and the parking garage. With option number two, which is the one you see before you, which is for the new construction, 182 spaces are required and 103 are provided. There are some minor changes between first and second reading with planning and development and design. There's one change between first and second reading from transportation. Transportation did find this inconsistent because of access to a local street. McKay Avenue is considered a local street. And because they are adding uses to this planned development, reconsideration to all driveway cuts are required by code. So the city council must reevaluate a waiver request for access to this local street for non-residential traffic. Saying that, the previously approved waiver is listed on your site plan, I'm sorry, your staff report. And then new waivers are access to the local McKay Street to reduce the required number of loading berths from three loading berths to zero and to contribute to the tree trust fund for any applicable mitigation of required trees. Saying that, overall, the development review and compliance staff did find this inconsistent with the city Tampa Development Code, primarily for the access to the local for non-residential traffic. If city council does approve the waivers and this PD site plan, please make note of the modifications between first and second reading. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions? Thank you, ma'am. Applicant, please.
Good evening, Morris Massey, 101 East Kennedy Boulevard, Suite 3700 here in Tampa. I've been sworn here representing the applicant in connection with this petition. First, the reason for the two site plan alternatives are contractually, we have the property under contract. But contractually, this is the GTE Federal Credit Union Building on South Dale Mayberry, and GTE has asked that we keep the remaining PD in place in the event we don't close, so that they have exactly what was approved back in 2004, without any additional requirements or, or conditions applicable to that, that project. So that's the reason for alternative one. Relative to alternative two, which is really the, why we're here tonight, we're proposing to convert an existing 26,000-square-foot building from financial and bank offices to a medical office building with the potential of, in the future, adding a 2,500-square-foot urgent care facility in the front between the existing building and Dale Mayberry Highway. One of the great attributes of this site is with the 150-space parking garage in the rear on the west side of the building, and the parking that's available in the front, we can meet the city's medical office parking requirements on site. So that, that is one of the primary reasons why this site is so attractive. Relative to the waivers and the finding of inconsistency, let me put up the site plan here, and this'll maybe be an easier way to walk through this. I've highlighted in yellow the possible expansion in the future. This is the parking area that would be added, where there's a drive-retention pond now. We are not changing the access driveways as they exist now. This is what was approved in 2004. The property does face Dale Mayberry. There is one driveway from Dale Mayberry into the site, but it is a right-in access point now, and it will be a right-in access point only in the future. FDOT will not allow that to be a full entry and exit point. So it's right-in only. So in order to access this parking area in the front and to utilize it, now, in this alternative one or alternative two, you have to be able to exit the parking lot onto McKay here, and there's an existing driveway. And we're indicating this would be an exit-only driveway location. Then obviously, the parking garage, which faces McKay, the only way you can access this parking lot is from McKay. So again, we are agreeing to certain modifications to the driveway here, so it would be an entry-only in this location. This segment of McKay, between Dale Mayberry and Church, there are no residential uses whatsoever. We're, the GTE building occupies most of the northern side of the property. There is a small law office building here that faces Church Street, but it's all non-residential uses on the north side. On the south side, it's Christ the King Church School, Church and School. We met with them early on the process, in the process. They have no objection to our application or our current driveway connections to McKay. We also held a neighborhood meeting at Christ the King Church about 30 days ago, and we had one person show up. So I don't think this is a major issue for the neighborhood. The other waivers involve the loading, dock area requirement in the code. For these types of uses, medical office, we really don't need major trucks coming in, and that would be disturbing to the neighbors. So we don't really need that at all, and so we're asking that to be waived. The other requirement, the other waiver we're seeking, we think that in the event that we do this small addition here and do put this parking here, we will have to remove some protected, not grand, but a couple protected trees. We may be able to replace them on site. But, you know, with the parking garage in the building and the driveway into the site, we are limited where we can plant the trees, so we're asking the ability to pay into the tree trust fund. With that, that really is my presentation. If you have any questions, feel free. I'm here to answer them. We've got law folks in the back who would be happy to answer any questions, too. Thank you.
Any questions by counsel? Okay. Is anyone here from the public here to speak on item number 10? If so, please come forward, three minutes a person.
No, no, let's leave it open till 1:30. I gotta, I don't have to catch a plane to four. I don't care. I really don't.
Why not? Did I hear a motion to close? Did I hear a second? Okay, we have a motion to close by Councilman Maniscalco. A second by Councilman Gudes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. I believe, Councilman Carlson, are you comfortable taking this one, sir? Number 10.
File number REZ 1979. Move-in ordinance presented for first reading consideration. Ordinance, rezoning property in the general vicinity of 711 South Dale Mayberry Highway in the city of Tampa, Florida, more particularly described in section one, from zoning district classification, PD, planned development, bank with drive-in and business professional office to PD, planned development, bank with drive-in, medical office, business professional office, clinic, providing an effective date.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilman Carlson, a second by Councilman Miranda.
Plus the...
With all the...
Plus the amendments for a second reading. Is that right? And the revision sheet.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that was Carlson, Miranda.
The motion carried unanimously. Second reading and adoption will be on November 7th at 9:30 AM.
Okay, we are down to the final countdown. We have number 11.
Mary Samniego, planning, design, and development coordination. Item number 11 is REZ 1980. It's a rezoning request for 624 South MacDill Avenue from CG and RM 24 to PD for medical office and business professional office.
This is Danny Collins with your planning commission staff. I've been sworn in. This is our last case. Brings us to the Central Tampa Planning District. The site is generally located south of West Dealey on a street north of West Swan Avenue. Transit is available along South Dale Mayberry, or, South MacDill Avenue and West Swan Avenue. The site is in a C evacuation zone. This is an area of the subject site. You'll see South MacDill Avenue. You'll see Swan running east and west. You'll see this area south, just south of Swan is residential. And then on MacDill, you'll see commercial and office uses. This is the adopted future land use map. The site is shown here, outlined in purple. It has two future land use categories. It's Commercial Mixed Use 35, which is shown in pink. And then, and then in that dark green color is the Residential 35, which is shown on the east portion of the subject site. This site is surrounded by the Residential 35, the CMU 35 along South MacDill. And then this yellow, south of Swan, is Residential 6. Planning commission staff has reviewed the application and found the request supportive of many Tampa Comprehensive Plan policies. The proposed PD will ultimately revitalize and redevelop an existing building, which is encouraged by the Comprehensive Plan. The PD will not alter this established development pattern, the orientation, which promotes several of the plan's policies. The proposed PD is also providing an eight-foot masonry wall in the eastern portion of the subject site, which would buffer the site from any residential uses to the east. Based on these considerations, the planning commission staff finds the request consistent with Tampa Comprehensive Plan.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Any questions?
Mary Samniego, planning, design, and development coordination. Here is the subject property. It's currently a vacant retail used on MacDill Avenue. Let me show you kind of some context. I know Danny just did it, but we're on MacDill Avenue. This is Swan Avenue. There's residential development, multifamily behind the property. If you can see, the existing property, and I'm going to show you pictures, is a seri, is a retail building that has been added on to several times over the course of the, of the years. This is the length of the subject property. What the applicant is proposing is in effect to demolish a portion, the rear portion of the existing building, and then rehabilitate the front portion for a medical and business professional office uses. So like I said, the building currently goes back into this area. That would all be demolished, and then the existing remaining portion would be rehabilitated for the new uses if approved. And then the surface parking lot would be where the end of this building currently is. They're asking for business professional and medical office uses. Based on the square footage of the proposed building, which is 8,500 square feet, a total of 25 parking spaces are required for medical office uses. They are proposing 24 spaces. That's a 4% parking reduction. Transportation did find this inconsistent for the parking reduction. And then the only other waiver that's being requested is the used-to-use buffer along the east property line. Because it is up against a multifamily development, the code requires 15 feet of a landscape buffer with a six-foot-high masonry wall. In an attempt to bring the site as close to compliant for parking as necessary, the 15-foot buffer would eliminate and affect that whole row of parking. In lieu of that requirement, instead of a 15-foot landscape buffer with a six-foot-high wall, the applicant is proposing a waiver to do a six-foot landscape buffer with an eight-foot-high CMU wall, subject to payment to the district in lieu payment. Other than that, there are some changes between first and second reading. I will point out that because of the land use category this was in, the special use criteria for medical office do carry forward. That was in your staff report on pages two and three for your consideration. Transportation, like I said, did find this inconsistent for the one parking space reduction. And Natural Resources does have a couple clarification for notes that are on the site plan. Saying that, overall, the development review and compliance staff did find this inconsistent based on transportation inconsistency for the parking waiver. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions? Thank you very much, ma'am. Applicant, please.
I think I'm good. Thank you, though. Clayton Brickelmeier again, 601 Ashley. Happy to report the site has no trees. The, again, I'm going to skip to the waivers, because I want to go home. The waiver on the used buffer, I just wanted to be clear. I'll actually show you this real quick. Mary sort of described it. It's really hard to catch in a picture. But the current structure is an industrial building, and these are all, like, lean-to metal buildings and whatnot. The current wall is, there's already an eight-foot wall in place. It runs down to this masonry building, which is right up on the property line. As a result, we, we show on this plan, we're patching that eight-foot wall. Very nice couple owns both this duplex and this duplex, and I had a nice chat with them, and there's a support letter in the file. They're excited that this is going to get a lot nicer. It's adaptive reuse. The parking waiver, we managed to work really hard and get it down to just the one spot. I think we meet all the criteria, and I'm available for questions.
Any questions from counsel? Okay, thank you very much. Anybody here for, Councilman Dingfelder, you have a question, sir?
No, you guys have to indulge me. So when I was 16 years old, I worked in this building. I don't know if Charlie remembers, there used to be a laundry. And, and I worked in there, and we, it was laundry, and we got sheets, I guess, from Tampa General Hospital. And I literally had no fingerprints by the end of the summer, because those sheets were so hot, they burned it all. Can I be fair and impartial? Yes.
Was that your first job?
It was probably my first real job with, with, yeah.
Mine was cash and carry. Okay, anybody here, that's funny. Anybody here to comment publicly on item number 11? If so, please come forward at this time.
Mr. Brickelmeier, as far as I'm concerned, tear the whole place down. It has bad...
Motion to close.
We have a motion to close by Councilman Citro, a second by Councilman Maniscalco. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Councilman Dingfelder, do you, sir, feel comfortable taking item 11?
All right. I will, let's see, is this the PD? It is, okay. I'll move rezoning file REZ 1980, item 11. Move the ordinance for approval for first reading ordinance, rezoning property in general vicinity of 624 South MacDill Avenue in the city of Tampa, Florida, more particularly described in section one, from zoning to district classification CG... Commercial General and RM 24 Residential Multifamily to PD Plan Development Medical Office and Business Professional Office, provide an effective date, and specifically would note that the petition has met its burden of proof to provide incompetent substantial evidence that the development as conditioned and shown on the site plan is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and the city code, including the revision sheet.
We have a motion by Councilman Dingfelder, a second by Councilman Manasakko. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
The motion carried unanimously. Second reading and adoption will be on November 7th at 9:30 a.m.
Okay, we are finished on land use hearings. Councilman Carlson, any motions or comments, sir?
It sounds like we should have a workshop or something on trees so we can have a broader conversation, but I'll leave that to somebody else.
We already have a tree program.
There's something that came up during the break that I wanted to bring up. Sorry to, I know it's late, but the Tampa Hillsborough Economic Development Corporation has proposed today or yesterday that they changed their name to Tampa Bay EDC, and it set off a firestorm in the region. The other EDCs are angry about it, and the reason is that the term Tampa Bay has always meant to represent the region, and the Tampa Bay Partnership, remember even, was controversial 20 years ago, but they were representing the region. In this case, there is a very good EDC in Pinellas County that's probably even better than the one in Hillsborough, and they take offense to it. They say we have a great relationship partnering, and we don't want them to imply that they represent the whole region when they're only representing Tampa, Hillsborough. I bring this up because we give them $500,000 a year, and I just saw this, so I don't have any fancy resolution prepared, but I wonder if we could either pass a resolution or schedule it for next time to recommend that the Tampa Hillsborough Economic Development Corporation not include the term Tampa Bay in its name.
I agree with you. I don't think Tampa Bay should be included.
I agree. Councilman Dingfelder.
What's the timetable on this, number one? And number two, maybe we could hear from that group that we give money to and/or our staff to see if there's any input.
They're going to roll it out at their annual meeting, which I think is in two weeks.
Really?
You know, if I may, how about instead of a resolution, maybe you can do it faster as a letter, I mean, from all of us.
If we put it in the, you all typically will do an action notice, and if we just had that, we could forward it to them, but if we could just make a statement that we recommend that they do it. It goes back to the thing about regional cooperation, collaboration. It sends a very aggressive negative signal to the region.
Why are they doing it?
I think some marketing person is probably saying it's a good idea. By the way, the Tampa Chamber is doing the same thing, but we don't give money to them. That was announced today, too, so we don't have any influence over that, but if we're putting $500,000, then I think we should not be supporting something that's going to hurt our partners across the bay.
There is no city. Tampa Bay is a body of water.
Yeah, that's right.
Nothing else. You don't see Miami Beach Bay. You don't see San Francisco Bay. You don't see none of that stuff.
What's going to happen is that the term Tampa Bay is going to have no value, because I spend a lot of time in St. Pete. They're already pushing, and you'll see in this story, they're pushing for Tampa-St. Pete-Cleaver again. They're going to stop using Tampa Bay because they think that if Tampa Bay, if the Tampa Chamber and Tampa Economic Development Groups can use Tampa Bay, that means to them it represents Tampa, not the region. It won't have its meaning anymore.
So what do you suggest, a letter or a resolution?
I would like to make a motion that we send a short letter that just says that we recommend that they not use the term Tampa Bay in their name.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Carlson, a second by Councilman Manasakko. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And Councilman Carlson, if you either want it to come from the chair or you can come from your office, saying that you've been designated in that regard.
If it can come from you, that'd be great.
Yeah, sure. Just if you could have Jason get with Brandon tomorrow, we'll get it together. Anything else, sir?
That's it, thank you.
Okay, Councilman Miranda.
Councilman Citrus.
Councilman Manasakko.
I'm not going to make a motion tonight, but I'm thinking about possibly in the future, near future, doing a workshop on limiting storage facilities. We had the discussion earlier this evening, but, you know, especially how they impact the urban neighborhoods. And, you know, while looking at the code, perhaps doing like a moratorium on the, but I'm not making a motion now, just.
About seven chairs in hospital.
There you go.
We can limit that, too.
Anything else, sir? Okay, Councilman Goode.
I had a discussion with Gene Duncan and Brad earlier this week. We had a lot of constituents talking about these roundabouts in the communities, and I told them I was going to make a motion tonight for a overview of it. So tonight, I would like to make a motion, the Director of Transportation, come before Tampa City Council and give a detailed overview of the roundabout projects slated for each Tampa and the city of Tampa as whole. Overview point of this concept, which starts with start dates and completion dates, cost overview and fund sources for each Tampa project, city projects, this overview scheduled date of November 21st, 2019.
We have a motion by Councilman Goode, a second by Councilman Manasakko. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Anything else, sir? Councilman Dingfelder, anything, sir?
Nothing, sir, thank you.
And if I may, very briefly, just quickly, I motion, a nice lady in New Tampa, Frances Brass, she turned 107 years old.
Wow.
And I mean, 100.
Is that the lady who still drinks Coke every day?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. 1920, or 1912, the year Woodrow Wilson was elected president. That's something else. I'm going to present her with a commendation, if I may.
We have a motion from Councilman Viera, with a second from Councilman Goode. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
And then, and this, and gentlemen, I apologize for springing, was very controversial late at night. I know we were going to debate this. I motion for a commendation for friends and nonprofit founded by the parents of children with Down Syndrome in West Florida for their buddy walk. That's a joke, obviously. Further, that said commendation be presented on October 26th at their event.
We have a motion from Councilman Viera, with a second from Councilman Dingfelder. All in favor?
Aye.
And nothing else?
That's it. Move to receive and follow.
Aye.
Oh, yes, the past.
I don't think he called for a vote.
Oh, may I have a vote on that?
Aye.
Okay, eyes have it.
And we adjourn, sir.
We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Here's my motions.
Long night tonight, huh?
Welcome, welcome.